Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Board of Commissioners, City of Bowling Green, regular meeting, City Hall, December 20th, 2022, at 4:30 PM. We will begin with the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to introduce Jamie Ward, pastor.
Pastor.
He is a pastor at Hillview Heights Church out Nashville Road here in Bowling Green. Jamie, if you would come to the podium here, I'm sure you're used to being on a microphone. But, but the reason I'm asking the pastor from Hillview is because I want to publicly thank him and his church and his, his faith community for all the work that they did about a year ago, a little more than a year ago, hard to believe, hard to believe that that's been a year. So when, when the disaster struck, it seemed like God was everywhere, and the hand of God was everywhere. We, we needed, we needed help with, with managing volunteers, and Living Hope stood up, and they managed our volunteer center, Western gave us a place to be, Hillview Heights, truckloads literally of, of goods and from all across the country, literally, started arriving, and from what I understand, and you can elaborate on this, you all started storing those things over at the church. And then when that got full, then they brought it out to the Old Cumberland Trace Elementary School, and then when that got full, then we went to the Sears at, at the, at the mall. And, and that quickly got full, too. But, but they dedicated, from what I understand, at least four full-time volunteers, took from your staff, mobilized to help us to manage this massive mountain of things. So I wanted to, to say a heartfelt thank you and, and have you over to talk a little bit about your experience with that and what that meant to your church, and then kick us off with a blessing.
You've always heard that, that it's easy to talk the talk, you know, but, but walking that talk is a different thing, and I feel like we learned a lot about, not just our church during that time, and we did learn a lot about our church. We learned a lot about our city, we learned a lot about the other churches, we learned a lot about our, our local leadership, because part of the challenge, as you all well know during that time, was the generosity of our city. You know, that's why all those places filled up so fast. Texas didn't get here i- in a day, you know, Tennessee didn't get here in a day, it was the people in this city, and makes you realize how blessed you are to live in a city like this, and the generosity was, was overwhelming. We called it the disaster within the disaster, you know, what you do with everything, but, but we did, we've, you know, and I don't feel like we did any more than anybody else, because everybody was willing to do what they could. We were fortunate that we have a large staff, and we were able to send four of them over to work, you know, at, at the mall for three weeks, and to put all that together, they did a great job, but those four couldn't do it, because, you know, people from the city came to volunteer, people from other churches came to volunteer. You all know, over 20 of the 35 hotels had displaced people in them, and, and I think for three days, we did 650 meals each day, and then we just realized, we can't do this, and word got out, and other churches started bringing meals, and other organizations started bringing meals, because one church wasn't enough for a response, two churches weren't enough, but, but how blessed we are to live in this community where just people continued to come. I know, I can think of one gentleman who came three days in a row to the mall with a truckload of stuff, and every day we turned him away. And he's, and he said, well, I'm not getting rid of it, so I'll come back tomorrow, and I think the third day, we had room. But, you know, who goes to that kind of trouble? You know, that he's like, hey, I want to help. So we felt very blessed by our church's response, but we felt very blessed by other churches' responses, by the city's response. We housed about 80 people from North Carolina who were with the disaster relief team, so they were at our church for two weeks, I think, and, and these are people that have been all over the country in probably every kind of disaster that all of us have read about in the last 10 years. And they said that this was one of the most organized cities that they had been a part of, and they were so surprised how quick the city's response was and, and how quickly so many volunteers came and served, so I don't feel like we did anything more special than anybody, just the whole community was willing to reach out, and we were just thrilled to get to be a part of, being a part of people's lives, you know, that's, that's what you do, you know, it's your ministry, that's your all's work, you know, is to be a part of people's lives, so we really appreciated the opportunity, the trust, you know, to send four really kids, you know, over to the mall, and those kids worked 15, 16 hours a day, and we were so proud of them and their work. But, but the other thing that stuck out to me about that, and it stuck out to the kids, is that many of you were there almost every day, and you didn't just go, you know, like for a photo op, you know, but you were there, you found those kids, and you encouraged them, and you thanked them, you thanked volunteers that were there, and, and I just think it's great that we live in a city with that kind of leadership, and so we appreciate you all so much. We pray for you every day. We knew the challenges of a tornado, you know, because we were a part of it, we don't know the challenges of everyday local leadership in life, but I can imagine that it's fun and entertaining and difficult, and, and we pray for you, and our prayer specifically for you, when God asked Solomon, he said, you know what, I'll give you whatever you want, you just ask for it and it's yours. And God's never asked me that, and my answer would have been different than Solomon's, but Solomon said, give me wisdom to discern the hearts of men, and that's what we pray for you all, that God would give you wisdom to discern the hearts of men. So thank you, thank you for your trust, and thank you for your leadership to our city, we really appreciate it.
No, we're humbled. It, most people don't know, when this was happening, all of our churches became the pillars of our community. Hillview Heights, you know, was an integral part, because you have a large amount of people that came and wanted to help, and everyone wanted help, but what was amazing is that we were able to concentrate the help in the right way, and that was where our police and our fire and our city sheriff and our police all worked together collaboratively with, you know, emergency operations. Our community was very lucky, very fortunate to have what transpired, and, and I will say, it was solid leadership across the board, from our utilities, to our first responders, to our medical facilities, how they were overwhelmed, but didn't turn any way, buddy away, everyone came together in this community, and about, I think it was this commission meeting after, we had prayer downstairs, and we offered for all the parishioners, the churches to come, and, and many, many came, but they were serving at the same time. What's happening in our community is, you know, right now, we just had a few minutes ago, Warren County is, you know, swearing in all their newly elected officials, and we saw the pastor over there praying, and, and I believe the families that pray together stay together, the communities that pray together stick together, and that's what we saw and have witnessed here in Bowling Green, so we thank you very much from the bottom of our hearts.
So much. Appreciate it. Pray for us. Lord, we love you, and, and we thank you that even in an incredibly difficult time, how we still see a hand of mercy and a hand of grace. Lord, we remember the families of all those that were lost during this time, we lift them up to you, you promise to comfort those who grieve and those who mourn. You also promise a peace that surpasses understanding, or a peace that is greater than understanding, because I don't know that anybody in this room understands, but you promises a peace because of that. I thank you for this great community, I thank you for its leadership, I pray for your continued blessings over this place called Bowling Green, Kentucky. I thank you for the churches that came together, the organizations that came together, I thank you for our, our law enforcement, I thank you for our fire personnel, and I thank you for all those that work so hard and put lives at risk to save others. And so, Lord, we know we come to you because you alone have the words of life. Lord, we thank you, even at this season of Advent, that we're reminded that you came, that God put skin on in this time, 2,000 years ago, and so, Lord, we thank you for the hope that we have in you. I lift this leadership group up to you, and I pray you give them the wisdom of Solomon as they lead. We love you, Lord, it's in your name that we pray. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor Ward, in regards to, to your staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Perigin, Mrs. Jackson, will you please give a roll call?
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Mayor Alcott.
Here.
Mr. Mizel, do you have any comments at this time?
Just my usual. Anyone in the audience needs to make public comments, please sign the register in the back of the room, and those will be handled at the end of the regular session.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. First item will be our approval minutes for regular meeting, December 6, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. No questions or comments. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-265.
Municipal Board approving the promotion of Jennifer Lightfoot to the position of Office Associate II in the Finance Department.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
I'd like to hand this item off to Katie Schaller-Ward, our Assistant City Manager, CFO. Katie?
Good afternoon. Jennifer Lightfoot is actually here with us this afternoon. She was hired during COVID in October of 2020, so this is the first opportunity she's had to come to a board meeting, and so I asked that she be here today. Jennifer has been with us for two years, and the Career Path Advancement Program for the Senior Office Associate requires that you be in your position for two years, and then there was a testing opportunity that came up just a few weeks ago, Jennifer took the test, she passed it with flying colors, it was, her scores were phenomenal in all the different categories that are tested, and so we are recommending Jennifer for promotion to the Office Associate II position.
Okay, Jennifer, you have any family with you tonight?
I know, I'm here.
You're here, well, we're glad you're here, and we're, you a pre, congratulations here. All right. Commissioners, all right.
Congratulations.
Roll call.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, congratulations. Municipal Order Number 2022-266.
Municipal Board approving the probationary appointment of Tiara Britt to the position of Human Resources Manager in the Human Resources Department.
Move.
Second.
By Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
As you all will, sorry, remember, sorry, from the last meeting, Tiger Thule is, is retiring and, and moving away, and so we are looking, we were looking for a replacement for Tiger. We think we found that person, and I'd like to ask Erin Holes, your HR Director, to come up and make a recommendation. Erin?
All right, good afternoon. So this is the second time in just a couple months that I get to come to you with an appointment for my own department, which is so exciting that we are growing in this way. We recruited both internally and externally for this position, we received 65 applications, which was fantastic. About 20 were, were reviewed a little bit more seriously, and we did 10 interviews. We also did a round of second interviews with three candidates. So we initially did interviews within the Human Resources Department with myself, Lori Gray, our other HR manager, and David Weisbrot, our Safety and Risk Manager, and then we did a second round, we asked some of the department heads that are going to be some of the main partners with this new HR manager, Brent Belcher, and Chief Justin Brooks, also to meet with them as part of that second interview. So I would like to introduce Tiara Britt, if you could stand, please. Tiara is a graduate of Warren East High School, she has her bachelor's degree from the University of Louisville. She currently has been working with Warren County Schools as an HR specialist for five years, and prior to that, she has worked in multiple organizations in both operations and human resources, which I think makes her a very well-rounded candidate, and I'm so excited for her to join our team. She is here tonight with her father, Michael, her aunt Andrea, and her boyfriend, Jeremy. So please let me know if you have any questions.
I think they should stand up. A little Britt family, we're good. Tiara, welcome to the City of Bowling Green, so we're glad we can steal you from Warren County Public Schools.
[laughing].
All right, Commissioners, let's make this happen. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, congratulations, Tiara. All right, the Britt family is a very small family in the Warren East.
Yeah, didn't recognize that name.
Very well-known family in Warren East. Congratulations, Tiara. Municipal Order Number 2022-267.
Municipal Board approving the reappointment of Mike Riggs and appointment of Benny Stouffer to the City of Bowling Green Board of Ethics.
Move. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. I've made this appointment, and I've been looking for a person for about a month, and Sue made this recommendation, Benny Stouffer is a pastor out at Hillview Heights, and Living Hope, excuse me, thank you, and I highly recommend him for this position, he's willingly, has raised his hand and willing to serve our community, because this position pays nothing. However, he is going to take on this effort if y'all so willingly vote for him tonight. All right. Let's make it happen. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-268.
Municipal Board approving a joiner agreement with the Kentucky Public Employees Deferred Compensation Authority regarding participation in the authority's supplemental retirement options.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
We have been partnering with the Kentucky Deferred Comp for, for many, many years, and we would like to continue that relationship. They offer us a 401K, a Roth 401K, a 457 plan, a traditional IRA as well, as well as Roth, and as you know, more than ever, retirement system is not the same with the newer employees that are hired in, so they rely more on their own investments, and this provides a good option for them. And so we have a rep that's dedicated to the city that comes here fairly often, probably once a month or so, to meet with employees on their investments and their retirement plan, and we would ask that we, we re-up with Kentucky Deferred Comp, Kentucky Employees 457 Deferred Compensation Plan, and the 401K Deferred Compensation Plan. In your packets is what they call a joiner agreement, which basically outlines everyone's responsibilities, and just ask for your approval. Erin Holes is here, HR Director can answer questions on this agreement, as well as, I think Hillary's reviewed it as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Any questions, comments at this time? None, roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-269.
Municipal Board authorizing the continuation of an agreement with Premise Health, formerly known as CareHere PLLC, for administering employee onsite medical clinic services through calendar year 2024.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
Opened our, our employee clinic back in 2015, we call it, still call it CareHere. So in August of 2015, we did our deal, we initially had a three-year period, we wanted to make sure we had a good trial period, didn't want to go too long, and so every year after that's been two-year renewals. Coming to you tonight for renewal for 2023 and 2024, we began the clinic with a few occupational medicine services, pre-employment, we're now doing annual firefighter physicals and all kinds of lab work that saving, saves us a lot of money, and we pay approximately $623,000 a year, which offsets, could be a lot more what we're paying, what we would pay just arms-length transactions with a, a private clinic, or what we would pay in claims for primary care for, for this clinic. So we have been very pleased with CareHere and Premise, and would like to continue the relationship with them. Everyone loves Dr. Davidson, and employees are really, really appreciative, I think, of this in-house employee clinic that we started roughly six, seven years ago now, so we think it's been a huge success, and ask for another two-year renewal with CareHere and Premise. Erin, again, is here, can answer questions on this agreement.
Commissioners, all right, roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-270.
Municipal Board authorizing the continuation of an agreement, as amended, with Medbin, relating to employee health and third-party administrator services for calendar year 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
City has a self-funded healthcare plan, but we do need help administering it, and so we don't have the staff to watch every claim that comes in and pay it, so we hire what they call a third-party administrator, and that's a TPA, and in 2019, we bid this out, and we went with Medbin, and so we've been with them now for roughly three, four years. They are proposing just a slight increase for the next year of $6,600 total, which I think is really, really good for the, for the year 2023, and so we're coming to you tonight requesting a one-year renewal continuation with, with Medbin as our TPA. Erin, again, is here, can answer questions on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Commissioners, all right, roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-271.
Municipal Board authorizing and accepting the purchase of pictometry aerial photography for the Police Department Communication Center from Pictometry International Corp., doing business as Eagle View of Rochester, New York, in a total amount not to exceed $350,000.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
We use pictometry for our high-resolution aerial imagery, which we use GIS, and we would like to continue our relationship with pictometry. This would be a six-year contract. I'd like to brag on Donita, we came to you, we put $350,000 not to exceed in this contract, thinking we would be, be somewhere close to that, but Donita is a shrewd negotiator, and she has gotten them down to a total of 1, 159 for the next six years, so for the same services, including a flyover. We also still have the built-in option for a emergency flyover, and we, we pulled that trigger last December when we needed a flyover after the tornado hit, and so we would like to continue, continue with pictometry. There are other agencies that, that participate on this, too, the City Planning, City County Planning Commission, Warren County PVA, and the BGMU as well, and they, they kick in a few, few dollars on, on this agreement, so Donita's here, can answer any questions on this, but it's been a good product up till now, and we think will be a, a good product for the next six years for us to continue using.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Commissioners, roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-272.
Municipal Board authorizing and accepting the number 2023-16 for Crosswinds Golf Course Irrigation System Replacement through non-competitive negotiations with Signet Golf Associates II, Inc. of Pinehurst, North Carolina, and further authorizing the direct purchase of materials and supplies from Site One Landscape Supply Holding LLC of Chicago, Illinois, in the total amount of $1,759,942.
So moved. Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin, Mr. Mizel.
This is a CIP project we had in the FY23 budget, and so back in July, or June, we started going out for bid to get ready for FY23 budget, and the first, our first attempt was, was a fail, I guess you'd say that. It came in over budget, not, not to our fault, but way over budget, we tried to negotiate a lower price with that company, and were unsuccessful. So Brent and I put our heads together and said, we gotta, we've gotta revise this and narrow down the scope. Brent went to work, revised the project somewhat, we rebid it in September, and again, got one bid, and that one bid was, again, over budget, $2.1 million or more. So Brent went back again and, and started negotiating with this company called Signet Golf Associates II, and after negotiations, we think they have agreed, we can break this thing into two pieces, materials and labor. By separating materials and labor, we can do a direct purchase on materials, save quite a bit of money, there's no markup, and there's no sales tax, and then we do a, a direct payment, separate payment for labor to Signet Golf Associates II, to bring this project in close to budget of $1,759,942, which is a lot, lot closer than we were, it's roughly $400,000, almost $400,000 lower than the original bid. Sent you an email on this, I think last weekend, to kind of get you abreast of what's going on with this. This is a lot of money, but this is our only public 18-hole golf course in the City of Bowling Green that serves 75,000-plus residents. This golf course was built in 1991, roughly about the time the convention center was built, and these are original irrigation lines, and some are not working at all, there's holes that doesn't, don't work at all, we can't even turn the thing on anymore, so we are at the mercy of weather, rain, fall, and so this is something we've got to, we've got to either, we've got to invest in this course to keep it alive and vibrant and competitive with, with others, and so we're coming to you tonight, we think we've got the funds put together, we've worked with Katie, found some underspending, we've also rescheduled or delayed some other projects we're going to do to, to, to fund this project, and we think this is the right company to go with, out of Pinehurst, North Carolina, kind of the, one of the, the homes of golf, Pinehurst, North Carolina, Signet Golf Associates. So Brent is here, he's worked with Mike Mitchum on this, and can answer any questions you have on this project, but this would all come out of the, the golf fund, and we have funding set aside to do this project, which would start late summer of '23 and wrap up before fall of, of '23. So it'd be a pretty short, fast, abrupt project where they would go, go in and irrigate all 18 holes and, and get the job done.
It's about 30 years old, is that the typical lifespan of an irrigation system for a golf course? Were you, I mean, replacing it is pretty dramatic.
The answer is yes. In the 90s was the boom for the golf industry, the time Crosswinds was built nationwide, that's when the boom of cross, of golf courses being built, so correspondingly, guess what, now irrigation replacement is big business.
Alive.
Alive and doing well. One of the biggest industries with growth and in price as well, because of the demand and supply chains being, being hampered, I guess, we'll say, so yeah, it's all aligned very, very much for the replacement schedules nationwide to be pretty much the same type of thing.
What happens if we don't do this?
We'll continue being at the mercy of weather, and right now, when we, we do our best to keep the greens watered, and that's pretty much it. Our problem is when we have a leak, it's isolating that leak and trying to get that leak fixed in time before really warm weather harms the greens. The type of grass we have, bent grass, that Crosswinds require, requires us to keep the greens wet, so we can't afford to go days with dry conditions on the greens. So, we can't afford to go days with dry conditions on the greens at Crosswinds. And if we do, we can very well have some severe damage that we can't replace, not easily anyway. This system would allow us to isolate and obviously do repairs. And obviously, it's a new system, so you don't have to pay repairs. But, so, yeah. And the other thing that has changed over time is that presently, when you do a replacement or repair of the irrigation system, you literally see a pipe and you're going to see a wad of wires throughout the run of that that's controlling a lot of the valves and such. And most of that is gone now. Technology allows wireless. The entire system isn't necessarily wireless, the large components are. So, that's because now, when you're having to do a replacement, you're trying to replace wires for an entire, you know, let's say, length of, so, yeah, it's kind of the next thing. So, at least this, we believe that this will give us the next generation of irrigation as well.
This 1.7 plus is a 30-plus-year investment. So, if you amortize that over 30 years, you're, kind of helps put it in perspective, so.
Related to the water park opened in 2000, and we just recently, we didn't replace all the plumbing, we replaced the filtration system. And that was just slightly over 20 years old. And these things that are living organisms, facilities are, it's an investment in infrastructure, if you will.
Just following up, can you just let our public know a little bit about the taxing district in that area that surrounds the golf course and how we have that funding mechanism for?
Heartland Tax District.
Yeah.
That surrounds. So, I came into Bowling Green in '89, went to Western and all those good teams. Crosswinds Golf Course had been on a farm. Nothing else was there, if anybody can believe that, on Scotts Road, nothing was there. The convention center came after, you know, the golf course was there. And then, so all the neighborhood, all the homes, all the businesses, all the medical supply, all those things came around the tax district, around the Heartland Tax District. And that is set aside for parks development funds and specifically noted golf course improvements. And that's what has, we've had a longstanding, we benefited, the Parks Department has benefited highly from the ability from that tax district to pay for a lot of our in-house, we'll say, you know, programs throughout or facilities throughout our Parks Department and including the golf course. And it's, so, yes, it comes directly from that tax district.
Thank you very much, Brent. Okay, Commissioners, no further questions? Roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-273.
Municipal order authorizing the purchase of fiscal year 2023 Surf Management Chemicals and Agents for the Parks and Recreation Department through non-competitive negotiations with various vendors in a total amount not to exceed $150,000.
So moved.
Second. Go back Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
So, our golf courses and soccer fields all require fertilizer chemicals to maintain spring seasons, usually our heaviest time where we really pour it on them. So, we use supplies from these four or five companies here. And we never really know how much we're going to need. We don't have any place to store these things. So, we have these four or five companies with, where we get quotes from them. And we, if one has, make up a three, what's the fertilizer, the?
Fertilizer.
There you go. We will pick the lowest price off the menu from these four companies and order it up and it's, bam, it's there. Weather, we're so weather dependent, as you know, with rain. If it rains, rains a lot and we get a lot of moisture, you know, you might have a buildup with, you know, where we need lime or anything like that to balance out the soil and the acidity of it. All that kind of stuff plays into this. So, these are ever-changing conditions of the turf and so, we need a quick response. So, we have determined that we can go this route with these six companies, have them ready to go and can order what we need from these six and get the lowest price and ask for your support to allocate $150,000 that was in the FY23 budget to cover any needs at the Crosswinds, Walker, Hobson, Lover's Lane Soccer, and Preston Miller Park. And Brent's here again to answer any questions you might have on this one.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Commissioners, roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-274.
Municipal order approving fiscal year 2023 Parks and Recreation Fees.
So moved.
Second. Go back Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
So, in your packets is a good memo from Brent explaining the reason why we need to make some adjustments to our parks fees. The number-one factor is that during last General Assembly, we went more, the state went more toward a consumption-based tax. And they have broadened everything that can be taxed on the sales tax side. So, we got included in that group where everything that we do now with golf and some, a lot of services that we provide are taxable under sales tax. So, Brent's reviewed our fees and, you know, the second factor as mentioned is inflation. Everything's costing more. So Brent's reviewed all of the fees. There's a program in your packets listing all of the current fees and the proposed changes. But all of the fees listed will include and cover the sales tax that's applicable on that service. So, it's a nice-looking brochure in your packets that Brent and his staff have put together. And again, he's here can answer any questions you might have on these changes. These would take effect for 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel.
Most of them are very minor.
Commissioners.
Just one question. I know we get a lot of questions about, you know, nonprofits being able to use public spaces for their, the public good that they provide our community. So, can you talk a little bit about the discount that nonprofits are provided in this fee structure we're approving?
Yes, nonprofits get, they had either 25% or 50% discount depending upon, if it's downtown, it's 25%. Everywhere else, it's 50% discount on all their rental rates. And that does have to show their nonprofit status with us. So, that is, that is consistent with what we've maintained that. And of course, majority of our events are actually held by nonprofit entities. A lot of whether they're community events, a lot of our, if you look at Caryacus Park Trails, runs, those sort of things are actually held more times than not by nonprofit entities. So, rarely does most of our rentals on some of those large events pay full price, they're paying some sort of discounted price because of that.
Further questions? Roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-275.
Municipal order authorizing and approving the city of Bowling Green to appropriate American Rescue Plan Act funding in an amount up to $500,000 to the Bayonne River Area Child Advocacy Center and further approving an agreement between the city of Bowling Green and the Bayonne River Area Child Advocacy Center.
So moved.
Second. Go back Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
Bayonne River Area Child Advocacy Center has been a direct partner with BGPD for a long time. And so, you won't find, hardly go down there a day without finding a staff member from BGPD or Leta Becker for services. And so, they are in need of expanding. Their volume is, it's hard to say, but it's increasing sadly. Their services that they provide are so crucial. Children that have been sexually abused need a private, comfortable place to go and be assessed and get the help that they need. And that's what BRACAC is providing. And so, given that BGPD is basically a direct connection with BRACAC, we felt that this would be a good place to invest $500,000 of our ARPA money to provide them with the ability to expand their services and cover the increase in their volume. And so, I went down there and took a tour, saw it firsthand myself, and I was amazed at the facility they put together out of the old church on Adam Street across from the T-Mart. And so, this money that we are allocating would be for them to purchase lots that are adjacent to their facility on Adam Street where they can, they can grow and expand. They have been privately fundraising for new facility for several years now, my understanding. And so, this money would go toward the purchase of that property to get them started on their expansion of their facility on Adam Street. Is it Adams? Okay. So, with us tonight is Jennifer Bryant, their executive director, along with our own Deputy Chief Brian Harrell, who's on their board. And I'll offer Jennifer, if you want to come up and say a few words. And Brian, explain, explain what your all's plans are maybe for this funding.
Well, first, I'd like to say thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. Thank you for coming to tour. I think each one of you has been to visit the center over the past year. We were starting on this more so right before the tornadoes happened. I think we had a meeting scheduled that Monday after. So, we hadn't been able to get back around to it until now. But child abuse is a significant problem in the state of Kentucky. We've ranked first in child abuse substantiations, three out of the last four years. So locally, we are also seeing this. BGPD has been a significant partner with us in trying to give these children, as Mr. Mizel said, a safe place, a child-friendly place, rather than having to be interviewed where a perpetrator just was or at social services or at the police department. We provide a very child-friendly space, enabling all the adults to come to the child at a child's most difficult time so that we can do the hard work, we can surround them, and we can give them a safe place to tell that story. 60% of the children who experience child sexual abuse won't ever tell. So, it is upon us and our community to do everything we can to provide these children with a safe place to tell and our best effort at justice and healing. We at the center provide medical exams, the forensic interview that is recorded so it provides good evidence and the child doesn't have to repeat the story over and over. And we are, this region's designated Child Advocacy Center. There are 15 in the state. So, we are just appreciative of the partnership and your diligence to help us see what we can do more to change this disturbing reality for children in this community.
I think everything has been said well. The only thing I would add in that in my 27 years with the department, the Child Advocacy Center has been a wonderful partner to the Bowling Green Police Department. So, it's an unfortunate reality that children are sexually abused. But they are wonderful in that and that they do assist with forensic exams and medical exams and courtroom introductions and ongoing therapy. So, this will, this will go a long way in expanding services and they are certainly a critical partner to the Bowling Green Police Department. And as to echo what Mr. Mizel said, our detectives are in there almost daily. So, they are a critical partner and it will make a real difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much to both of you. I'm going to, Commissioners, I know a couple of you want to speak on this one, so.
Standing awe of what you all do and appreciate everything that you do for these young people that can change the trajectory of their lives when they, when they do get the proper counseling and the proper treatment and, you know, the Bowling Green Police Department, what you all have to see every day and what you listen to from these children and, you know, God bless you and thank you. Much needed.
Thank you. I wish our community did not need you, but unfortunately, we do. And I'm very thankful to be a part to see you all expand.
You've taken amazing care of your facilities and you're making part of Bowling Green better. And so, we appreciate that very much.
Mr. Brian, I've been there in the role as a city commissioner, but sadly, also in the role as a guardian at Lighton, where I've had to go over there with the kids. So, like you said, this is not only a critical part, you know, something that the Bowling Green Police Department also needs, but it's also something that these children, when they go and they have those interviews, kind of like what you said, they feel safe. Because when they're not in a safe place, they're not going to basically be as vocal or tell exactly what happens. So, this is something that our community, sadly, this is something that our community needs.
Yes, thank you so much for what you all do in our community and my work in the schools and family resource. I get to see, you know, what you all do in our community every day. And what you do is so important. And like you said, you know, this unfortunately is a part of some of our youngest citizens' stories. And what you all provide in this trauma-informed, safe place where the worst has happened, but you provide that safe place where you can help them come out of that with healing and wholeness and be able to get through that without further damage. And I'm just grateful for this partnership that we have with the BGPD, with the Advocacy Center to really make sure that we are serving our youngest citizens when they need us the most in this way that is trauma-informed. And I'm just so grateful. I know we started this, I toured, like you said, a year ago and talked to the city manager and the city attorney about what were the barriers we need to remove to get this property, adjacent properties to you all. And I'm just so excited that we're finally here today to make this happen and make sure that we are continuing to make sure that this safe place is available to anyone who's experiencing this. So, thank you so much for everything that you all are doing.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Brian. Thank you, Officer Harrell. Roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-276.
Municipal order authorizing and directing the mayor to execute the update of area designation form of the Warren County Area Solid Waste Management Plan 2023 through 2027.
So moved.
Go back Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
Well, no, the county is responsible for solid waste and we are beginning a new term. As you know, they recently contracted with Scott Waste. And so, part of that is the state requires the county to submit an updated solid waste plan and that's before you, in your packets. They need the city to approve this plan before January 1 and it will remain in effect through 2027. So, this is more or less administrative thing to give them the okay to submit this to the state.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Commissioners.
Mr. Mizel, just one question. Maybe you can inform some of our citizens because a lot of times, and I'm sure all of us probably got like an email or two and asking, "Where's our trash? Why is it not being picked up?" Can you inform, who do they need to contact when something like that occurs?
Stan Reagan is still the point person at Warren County and he will handle all complaints, correspond with Scott Waste and handle all problems. When we get calls here, Debbie refers them to Stan.
Thank you.
You're right. Commissioner Bailey, a lot of people think that we're single entities of government, so we have separate forms of government. However, we are separate governments, but we have single entities of executing our needs. And one of those is like our planning and zoning. We have a single planning and zoning. We have a single executive agent that runs our refuge. And they've also recently adopted a new recycling, recyclops, and that's part of the county as well. And we do get complaints, however, I will state that we have advocated those over and they are working those diligently and working through the new contract that's set up. And I will say that our county, I'm glad they have that executive agent, but they're doing pretty well on a lot of the hiccups that are happening.
Things have started to smooth out a little bit, I think. It's with everything new, there's, there are tweaks and adjustments and just have to get through it. And I think we're hopefully through most of that now after several months and things are starting to... to settle in. People are starting to learn what's expected, the way, which way to turn your trash can, and what you can put out, what you can't. So I don't know why my phone's ringing, but.
I had a conversation with Stan last week, and he said that, you know, it's really minimal complaints now that people, I think it was an educational thing.
Was. Education and communication.
Yeah.
Transition.
So.
Yep.
Seems to be pleased with where they are.
Comments?
And just to clarify, we, in terms of me reading this plan, we're not approving anything related to this franchise with Scott Waste. This is much broader, just related to, you know, where our waste goes and our litter programs, just countywide. Is that, I want to try to understand what we're approving. It's, it's more of an overview.
Yes, we are approving the management plan of how we deal with our waste. And that's all, the responsibility that falls under Stan Reagan Coordinator Division for Environmental Planning and Technical Assistance of Warren County. So the contract with Scott Waste is just one piece of this. So this is the overall plan for Warren County, but they need us to sign off on.
Thank you.
Okay. No more comments this time. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2022-63 is our first rating is non-binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing .5712 acre from MHP Mobile Home Park and LI Light Industrial to LI Light Industrial, located at Zero Kenbell Boulevard, presently owned by Reed Street Investments LLC.
So moved. Second.
By Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
This was a unanimous vote by the Planning Commission to rezone a little over half acre on Kenbell Boulevard from Mobile Home Park to Light Industrial with the general development plan. Mr. Ben Peterson is here with us tonight, can answer any questions you might have on this rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel.
This is really, this is right about the place where we are widening Bale Boulevard, heading up to our roundabout on Middle Bridge, so.
Prove that today, and it's great.
Getting there.
Looking good.
Great. No further questions? Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2022-64, first rating non-binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 16.21 acres from AG Agriculture and RM3 Townhouse Multifamily Residential located, located at Zero Russellville Road, presently owned by Wabak Development Company, Inc.
So moved. Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perrigen, Mr. Mizel.
Another unanimous vote at the Planning Commission for the 16 acres on Russellville Road going from Ag to RM3. And Ben, again, is here to answer any question you might have on this one.
In here, Mr. Peterson. Any questions? None. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2022-65, first rating non-binding.
Ordinance re-adopting and amending comprehensive plan. Ordinance re-adopting and amending the Bowling Green Warren County Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as recommended by the City-City Planning Commission.
So moved. Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perrigen, Mr. Mizel.
Ask Mr. Peterson to step up and kind of give you just a brief overview, and maybe be able to answer any questions you might have on this plan update, the 2030 comprehensive plan update. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor and Commission. We started this process probably last summer, maybe fall, and then got a little sidetracked by a certain event that happened on December 11th, and kind of delayed things a bit. But we went through a very extensive look at the comprehensive plan. Most of the changes that are proposed are just updating the statistics, updating the facts and figures, and, and a little bit of housekeeping. The, the biggest changes come in the future land use map and the future land use element of the comprehensive plan. Most, most affect the areas outside the city and the edges. But regarding the map, future land use map, the changes included areas that we identified as neighborhoods that are zoned multifamily that probably should be rezoned to single family. So we altered a few of the areas of those neighborhoods in the city to kind of prepare for the eventual rezoning process there. The other change, biggest change was in, it's listed if you have the top of page two on our summary of changes, where we changed allowing, basically no longer requiring a future land use map amendment, where in the case of agricultural land, the farmer was only proposing to cut off one or two lots, required a future land use map amendment. Those are routinely approved all the time, almost without fail. So we took that requirement out to where you don't, you still have to rezone, but you don't have to do the future land use map amendment. So how does that help? One, it reduces the number of future land use map amendments we have. But the real reason we did it was try to give a break to those, to the little guy, if you will, the, the farmers who are only cutting off one or two lots when we know they're getting approval anyway. So, so that will alleviate that roughly $300 to $500 fee from, from that requirement. I, I can't remember one of those that has been denied since, since I've been here since 2016. So we didn't, we didn't see the need for that anymore. Other than that, you know, we had probably nine public meetings and, and a public hearing for the 10th meeting, met with several, several people. Everything's posted online. Everything was on all of our Facebook and Twitter accounts and, and websites. So that's, that's really the quickest summary I can probably give without rambling on too long. So I'll just be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Re. Commissioners.
Just also want to thank you just for everything that you all did to make sure the information was accessible to the public, and you, you know, put out videos and slideshows, just talking through each of these sections, because it's a big document. So you took the time to sort of break it down into smaller chunks and really make it accessible to folks and, and made space for people to come and make sure that their voices were heard in developing this vision document and this thing that guides us as we grow, making sure that our community had a voice in the process. So just thank you all for everything that you all did to make sure that our community had the, understood sort of what was in front of them and what we had in place, and then had the chance to be able to have their voice in the process.
Thank you very much. No further questions? Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2022-56, our second rating is binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a portion of attractive land containing two acres from AG Agriculture to RS1A Single Family Residential, located at 1740 Greenview Lane, presently owned by Sandra Franklin.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. This was a 5-0 unless there's any further questions. None. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2022-57, second reading binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 1.55 acres from HB Highway Business and RM2 Two-Family Residential to HB Highway Business, located at 802 US 31W Bypass, presently owned by JS and JM LLC, doing business as Economy N.
So moved.
Okay, this moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. This was also a 5-0 unless there's any further questions. None. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right. Ordinance Number BG 2022-58.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 18.19 acres from AG Agriculture to RM3 Townhouse Multifamily Residential, located at Zero Russellville Road, presently owned by LHMW Holdings, II LLC.
So moved. Second.
By Commissioner Melinda Hill, second by Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown. This was also a 5-0 vote unless there's any further questions or comments. None. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2022-59, second reading binding.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to increase the salary of the mayor.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. I will note, there was confusion on the level of salary last time at the commission meeting, and I'll state this for records, 38.5. Is that correct? Okay. So that would be implemented in two years when the next mayor is elected. All right. Okay. No further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2022-60, second reading binding.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances related to revisions, the Police and Firefighters' Retirement Fund Board, and other administrative changes.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. This was a 5-0 commission vote. Are there any further questions or comments? None. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2022-61, second reading is binding.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 17 Personnel Policies of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances related to employees participating in the county employees' retirement system.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. This was a 5-0 vote at the last commission meeting. Any further questions or comments? None. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2022-62, second reading binding.
Ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing 300.05 acres of a portion of properties located on Freeport Road, presently owned by the Intermodal Transportation Authority, Inc., with said territory being contiguous to existing city limits.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Perrigen. This is a 5-0 vote at the Board of Commissions. No further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Mrs. Jackson is going to check for public comments. And if we have anyone in the audience, you can go ahead and start making your way up to the podium. None. All right. Our next scheduled meeting will be in the year 2023, January 3, at 4:30, right here in the Board of Commission. Thank you, everybody. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, and wonderful New Year.